Let us pray. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we bow before your precious and holy throne this evening. Father, we rejoice in what you're doing in the lives of your people. And Father, may we always be that guiding light to those around us that will draw all men to you before it's eternally too late. And Father, tonight, we pray for this meeting. We pray for our commissioners, our mayor, all our leadership. We just pray, Father, that your hand will be upon them, your wisdom will be in their heart and mind, and you will, and they will always look to you for that leadership and guidance. Father, we pray for our school systems. We pray for our teachers and the work that they do. Wow, it's just an amazing, the wisdom that you share with them and the, that they get to share with those kids and be the example, Father, that they need. We just pray, Father, you watch over them, watch over our students in our schools and all of our officers. Tonight, we pray for those men and women in blue, all our emergency personnel. Father, we pray that you'll just be their shield tonight, watch over and care for them. But God, thank you so much for loving us. We pray for our world tonight, our country. This seems, just Satan knows his time is short and he's just at work at every hand. But Father, we know that you're greater than that. Help us be the example that we need to be, for which in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
At this time, the C S O meeting, the House of Representatives, our four leaders, and pledge to the American flag.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, y'all may leave.
Welcome, everyone, to the Blunt County Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, October 16th, 2025. Thank you Chaplain Millsaps for leading us in prayer, and thank you deputies for leading us in the pledge. At this time, we'll have the emergency evacuations procedure announcement.
For the emergency evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency evacuation, a alarm will sound, and we will should exit the building by way of the air stairs, on the same track of the building. If the air stairs are blocked, smoke, it is the other stair, not usually open. What you reach the main floor, follow the exercise, and exit the building, and quickly proceed away from the building. It is vital for others evacuated and members of the emergency vehicles.
All right, Madam Clerk, please take the roll call.
Mr. Chairman, there are 15 members present, six members are absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will declare that a quorum is in attendance. Commissioners Jopling and French let me know that they had a conflict, and I believe some other commissioners also had conflicts as well. At this time, we will welcome and recognize some special guests. So first of all, I'd like to recognize Steve Wildsmith, Mariville College Journalism Students. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Brad.
And next, we'll move on to Commissioner Bright. You're recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request that we take a moment of silence this evening in remembrance of two members of our Blunt County family who have passed away recently. First, Sheriff's Deputy Sergeant Rodney Postle, who courageously fought battle with cancer and served our community with dedication and honor throughout his law enforcement career. And also Mr. William Thomas Bowers, the father of our colleague, Commissioner Bowers, who recently passed away.
Thank you, Commissioner. Everyone, please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Item A, setting of the agenda. Chair will stand for a motion to set the agenda as published. I have a motion from Commissioner Martin, second from Commissioner Giles. Any discussion on setting of the agenda? Seeing none, commissioners, if you're in favor of setting the agenda as published, you'll vote yes. If you're not in favor, you'll vote no.
Mr. Chairman, there are 15 yes votes.
15 yes. The motion carries, and the agenda is set as published.
She's going to sign in there.
Okay. Item B, general consent calendar. Chair will stand for a motion to adopt the general consent calendar. I have a motion to adopt from Commissioner Bright, second from Commissioner Davis. Any discussion on the general consent calendar? Seeing none, if you're in favor of adopting the general consent calendar, vote yes. If you're not in favor, vote no.
Mr. Chairman, there are 15 yes votes.
15 yes. The motion carries. The general consent calendar is adopted. Next, we have item C, public input on items on the agenda. First off, I will recognize Harry Grothjohn. Mr. Grothjohn, please come forward. Speakers, please remember you have three minutes to speak. Please tell us your name, the district in which you live, and the item of the agenda that you are speaking to us on. Your time will be displayed up on this monitor up here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in District Two, and I'm talking, I'm speaking to you with regards to the unfinished business item, if that's appropriate.
Go ahead, sir.
I was impressed with a discarded copy of the Declaration of Independence a couple of months ago in the trash in my neighborhood. And I, and I was, at the time, working on a prayer that I had been led to a verse by Dave Cubal in a Gatekeepers Conference. He is the president of Intercessors for America. He's written a book called Impacting Generations. And he was teaching on intercessory prayer. And one of the scripture verses there that I was not familiar with was a verse that Timothy had asked Paul to write him, giving him some instruction as to what, you know, what he should be teaching, because he, being a young person, didn't have a lot of respect from the people who he was trying to shepherd there in Ephesus. So Paul, being in prison in Rome, wrote him this, two letters. And the second chapter of First Timothy, in part, reads his instruction, exhorting Timothy to first be in prayer by supplication and intercession and thanksgiving for all mankind, especially for kings and all those in authority, so that we may live peaceable and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness, so that men might be saved and come to the knowledge of truth. And that, that so inspired me that I wanted to try and share that with a larger, larger audience. And I think that the occasion of the 250th anniversary was a good occasion. So I took a quote from the Declaration of Independence and from the preamble to the Constitution that I thought would appropriate, be appropriate for group prayer or responsive reading. In the third paragraph, I quote the Declaration of Independence by saying, "We, by declaring in our founding fathers' Declaration of Independence, that, quote, 'All men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among them are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed.'" And in the preamble to the Constitution, it reads that it is designed to secure the blessings of liberty to us and our posterity, that what is said or done here in our county and in this meeting, that by our, your Holy Spirit's guidance, will be accomplished for your glory and honor. Amen. So I submit myself to be a volunteer in your committee if I might be of service. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to speak to items on the agenda? If so, please raise your hand. All right. Seeing none, we'll move off of items on the agenda. Public input, move on to item D, budget consent calendar. Chair will stand for a motion to adopt the budget consent calendar. I have a motion to adopt from Commissioner Carver, second from Commissioner Davis. Any discussion on the budget consent calendar? Seeing none, if you're in favor of adopting the budget consent calendar, vote yes. If you're not in favor, vote no. Oh, actually, there's no items on the budget consent calendar. We'll move on to item F, unfinished business.
I thought maybe I missed something last week.
No need to vote, no, no need to vote when we don't have to.
Unfinished business, item one, Blunt County 250th Anniversary Celebration Coordinating Committee. The Blunt 250 Committee, term to expire after December 31st, 2026. Up to three additional at-large members representing community organizations appointed by the Board of County Commissioners.
All right. Chair will stand at this time for nominations for this item. Commissioner Bright, you're recognized.
I'd like to nominate Teresa Goddard Rocco.
All right, Teresa Goddard Rocco.
Brian Daniels.
Brian Daniels.
And Frank Graffeo.
And Frank Graffeo. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, sorry, our microphones are off a little bit. Commissioner Carver, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Roy Shields.
Commissioner Carver nominates Roy Shields. Commissioner Martin, you're recognized. Oh, Commissioner Davis, go ahead.
I would like to nominate Jasmine Satterfield.
Jasmine Satterfield. Are there any further nominations?
It's Rocco, Daniels, Graffeo. And that's Frank Graffeo.
All right, commissioners, I'm going to ask the clerk to read the names. You're going to need to vote for three of these names when your name is called, so. Yeah, the clerk is going to read the names. Go ahead, Commissioner Hannah.
I just want to add, can I nominate Harry Grothjohn?
I'm sorry?
Can I nominate Harry Grothjohn?
Go ahead and make your nomination, and I just, I couldn't hear it.
I nominate Harry Grothjohn.
Harry Grothjohn. All right, any further nominations? Any objection to ceasing nominations?
No, sir.
All right, hearing, no objection to ceasing nominations. Nominations have ceased. Madam Clerk, please read the names of those nominated, and commissioners, please listen so that you know which three names you are going to want to vote for.
Teresa Goddard Rocco, R-O-C-C-O. Brian Daniels. Frank Graffeo. Roy, okay, spell it. Okay, I'll start back at the beginning. Teresa Goddard Rocco, R-O-C-C-O. Brian Daniels. Frank Graffeo, G-R-A-F-F-E-O. And I apologize if I'm not saying that correctly. Roy Shields. Jasmine Satterfield. And Harry Grothjohn.
Commissioners, you only have to say the last name of the people that you're going to vote for.
There are a total of six votes, correct? Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Aker.
So, naming three.
Yes. Commissioner Aker. Brian Daniels. Mr. Shields. Ms. Satterfield. Correct? Okay. Commissioner Anderson.
Rocco, Daniels, and Graffeo.
Anderson, Rocco, Daniels, Graffeo. Commissioner Bledsoe.
Satterfield, Shields, Rocco.
Commissioner Bledsoe, Satterfield, Shields, Rocco. Commissioner Bowers.
Roy Shields, Jasmine Satterfield, Harry Grothjohn.
Commissioner Bowers, Shields, Satterfield, Grothjohn. Commissioner Bright.
Satterfield, Shields, and Daniels.
Commissioner Bright, Satterfield, Shields, and Daniels. Commissioner Caldwell.
Daniels, Shields, Satterfield.
Commissioner Caldwell, Daniels, Shields, and Satterfield. Commissioner Carver.
Daniels, Shields, and Satterfield.
Commissioner Carver, Daniels, Shields, and Satterfield. Commissioner Kayler.
Daniels, Shields, Satterfield.
Commissioner Kayler, Daniels, Shields, and Satterfield. Commissioner Davis.
Daniels, Shields, Satterfield.
Commissioner Davis, Daniels, Shields, and Satterfield. Commissioner Giles.
Daniels, Satterfield, Shields.
Commissioner Giles, Daniel, Satterfield, and Shields. Commissioner Hannah.
Satterfield, Daniel, Grothjohn.
Okay, Commissioner Hannah, Satterfield, Daniels, and Grothjohn. Commissioner Martin.
Daniels, Satterfield, Shields.
Commissioner Martin, Daniels, Satterfield, and Shields. Commissioner Reagan.
Satterfield, Daniels, Shields.
Reagan, Satterfield, Daniels, and Shields. Commissioner Webb.
Satterfield, Shields, Daniels.
Commissioner Webb, Satterfield, Shields, and Daniels. Commissioner Wells.
Rocco, Shields, Satterfield.
Commissioner Wells, Rocco, Shields, and Satterfield. Okay, about 12 for Daniels.
No, I had 13.
We have 14 for Satterfield, 12 for Shields, 12 for Daniels.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. I will declare that Brian Daniels, Roy Shields, and Jasmine Satterfield are elected to that committee. Congratulations. All right, we'll move on to item G, new business. Item G one, Madam Clerk, please read the item.
Resolution number 2510-001, Budget Increase Highway Department. $2,027,742.66 reallocate, reimburse state aid funds to the asphalt hot mix line in the highway fund, referred to full commission with a favorable recommendation by the Budget Committee, 4-0.
I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2510-001 from Commissioner Bright, second by Commissioner Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, if you're in favor of adopting Resolution 2510-001, vote yes. If you're not in favor, vote no.
Mr. Chairman, there are 15 yes votes.
15 yes votes. The motion carries, and Resolution Number 2510-001 is adopted.
Resolution Number 2510-002, Budget Increase Schools. Appropriate one-time public school security grant funds to enhance school safety, non-recurring state grant, no matching funds required. Referred to full commission with a favorable recommendation by the Budget Committee, 4-0.
I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2510-002 from Commissioner Bowers, second from Commissioner Giles. Any discussion? Seeing none, if you're in favor of adopting Resolution Number 2510-002, vote yes. If you're not in favor, vote no. Has every commissioner voted?
Commissioner Bledsoe. Mr. Chairman, there are 15 yes votes.
15 yes votes. The motion carries. Resolution Number 2510-002 is adopted.
Resolution Number 2510-003, Budget Increase Blunt County Sheriff's Office. Appropriate mental health transport grant funds to cover Blunt County Sheriff's Office cost for non-inmate patient transports by AMR or other agencies. No matching funds required. Referred to full commission with a favorable recommendation by the Budget Committee, 4-0.
I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2510-003 from Commissioner Carver, second by Commissioner Webb. Any discussion? Seeing none, if you're in favor of adopting Resolution Number 2510-003, vote yes. If you're not in favor, vote no.
Mr. Chairman, there are 15 yes votes.
15 yes votes. The motion carries, and Resolution Number 2510-003 is adopted.
Resolution Number 2510-004, Budget Increase Elections. $25,000. Appropriate general county funds to replace necessary election day printers. Referred to full commission with a favorable recommendation by the Budget Committee, 4-0.
I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2510-004 from Commissioner Bowers, second by Commissioner Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, if you're in favor of adopting Resolution Number 2510-004, vote yes. If you're not in favor, vote no.
Mr. Chairman, there are 15 yes votes.
15 yes votes. The motion carries, and Resolution Number 2510-004 is adopted.
Resolution Number 2510-006, Central Services. To apply for 2025 Historic Development Grant and agree to funding the match. Requires a 50-50 match for courthouse eligible construction and maintenance expenses. Referred to full commission with a favorable recommendation by the Budget Committee, 4-0.
I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2510-006 from Commissioner Aker, second by Commissioner Webb. Any discussion? Commissioner Wells, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I just, quick question, is there a maximum amount on this grant that would be, need to be matched?
I'll direct that to Mr. Baldwin.
Commissioner, there is a $500,000 max on this match.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, if you're in favor of adopting Resolution Number 2510-006, vote yes. If you're not in favor, vote no.
Mr. Chairman, there are 15 yes votes.
15 yes votes. The motion carries, and Resolution Number 2510-006 is adopted.
Resolution Number 2510-012, A Resolution to Appoint Judicial Commissioners.
I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2510-012 from Commissioner Bowers, second by Commissioner Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, if you're in favor of adopting Resolution Number 2510-012, vote yes. If you're not in favor, vote no.
Mr. Chairman, there are 15 yes votes.
15 yes votes. The motion carries, and Resolution Number 2510-012 is adopted.
Resolution Number 2510-013, A Resolution Adopted by the Blunt County Commission Pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated, Section 5410-216, to abandon and vacate a section of right-of-way along Blunt Avenue, a county maintained road located in Blunt County, Tennessee, and approve an agreement with adjacent property owner.
I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2510-013 from Commissioner Carver, second by Commissioner Bowers. Any discussion? Seeing none, if you're in favor of adopting Resolution Number 2510-013, vote yes. If you're not in favor, vote no.
Commissioner Webb, do you wish to vote? You just have to tell me.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, there are 15 yes votes.
15 yes votes. The motion carries, and Resolution Number 2510-013 is adopted. Next, we have item H, announcements and statements. The Veterans Affairs Committee will meet next Thursday, October 23rd, at 4:30 PM at the Blunt County Courthouse in Room 315. The Beer Board will reconvene next Thursday, October 23rd, at 5:00 PM at the Blunt County Courthouse in Commission Meeting Room 430. The Planning Commission will meet next Thursday, October 23rd, at 5:30 PM at the Blunt County Courthouse in Commission Meeting Room 430. The Education Committee will meet Tuesday, November 4th, at 12:30 PM at Rockford Elementary School. The agenda items deadline for drafted resolutions will be noon on Thursday, November 6th. The Emergency Communications E911 Board will meet Thursday, November 6th, at 4:00 PM at the Blunt County Communications Center. The Board of Zoning Appeals will meet Thursday, November 6th, at 6:00 PM at the Blunt County Courthouse in Commission Meeting Room 430. Blunt County Government Offices will be closed for Veterans Day on Tuesday, November 11th. The Budget Committee will meet Thursday, November 13th, at 5:00 PM. Following that, a workshop committee meeting at 6:00 PM at the Blunt County Courthouse in Commission Meeting Room 430. Commissioners and appointees to the Blunt 250 Committee will be checking everyone's schedule and working on setting an initial meeting for that committee, so please be on the lookout for your email and text messages. And also, I wanted to thank our IT department and Justin McClure. You may have noticed that we've got these new touchscreens. We've also got a new camera system installed for greater transparency. So there's been a major upgrade in our broadcasting ability here at the commission, so I want to thank them for their hard work on that. Any other announcements or statements? Mr. Reagan, go ahead.
I, I don't think Rockford is the correct location for the Education Committee meeting. I think that it's supposed to be Union Grove Middle School.
Union Grove Middle School?
I will confirm that tomorrow and let you all know the definite, but I think it's Union Grove Middle.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. We'll make a note of that. Any other announcements or statements? All right, next, we have public input on items not on the agenda. I have one card, Scott Mitchell Lane, please come forward. Speakers, again, remember, tell us your district, your full name, and what you wish to speak to us about. You'll have three minutes, and the timer will be up here on the screen.
Yes, Scott Mitchell Lane, I'm District Six. To my knowledge, two years ago, my dad passed away, and I bought my brother's land at 420 Clover Hill Road. Well, by Blunt County, I had to spend thousands of dollars of my, of my own money to get up to their code, and they still took the land without reimbursing me anything for it. So I was kind of, I was needing to know why.
Well, at this meeting, sir, we don't give back and forth, but if you would follow up with us after the meeting.
Follow up with you guys?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who wishes to speak to us on items not on the agenda? Anyone else who wishes to speak to us on items not on the agenda, please raise your hand. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item J, adjournment. Without objection, we are adjourned.